I call to order the special meeting for the Adrian City Commission for August 14th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Roberts, present. Commissioner Schwartz, present. Commissioner Banky, present. Commissioner Miller, present. Commissioner Castleberry, present. Commissioner Gauss, present. All commissioners members present. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Schwartz, yes. Commissioner Banky, yes. Commissioner Miller, yes. Commissioner Castleberry, yes. Commissioner Gauss, yes. Mayor Heath, yes. Motion carried. We will now begin our administrator candidate interviews, and we are going to begin with Chad Isit Ba.
Yes, it's Chad Ba, like a football.
Yes, thank you. All right.
So.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here, chief. I'm asking the first question.
Okay.
So what's your approach to evaluating and improving city services?
Well, first of all, understanding city services are very important and meeting with the folks that are really carrying out the daily plans, the brass that are carrying out the different departments, the officials that are carrying that out and understanding what the metrics are that the commission wants, what the citizens want on their expected service level. One thing that I do quite often is meet with folks even at the line level to understand what are the hurdles that are in place for them on their daily activities and try to close those gaps with those that are leading those different departments. Being a police chief in my 30th year, I've been very fortunate to expand beyond just the work of the city police chief, the township police chief of 100,000 people. We have 36 square miles and very connected with various departments and leading different initiatives and projects within the township. So when you ask that question, I think it's first about being present, understanding what the initiatives are and working with the elected officials to see what the goal, the envision of the outcome that's expected, number one, and understanding the fiscal restraints that come along with that.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Certainly, sorry.
Yeah, if you move the microphone up, it'll help. It's way too low. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Good afternoon. How do you translate the commission's priorities into clear and achievable mandates for staff?
That's a very important question because the vision of the strategic plan that's developed through this commission and the citizens of Adrian has to come out clear for the leaders of this community. The different divisions of Adrian, the different positions has to understand clearly, and you do that through presence, being there to lead clearly, to understand what the different learning tools are for the different disciplines, whether it's your public works, whether it's parks and rec, whether it's the police department, the fire department, whatever discipline it is, make sure that they have the training to carry out the mission. First, the understanding to clear out, to carry out the mission, and trust employees to carry out the mission. But there's a part of this that I've found in my 30 years, you have to make sure the execution is there. So trust but verify that the work's being done and make sure it's aligned with a strategic plan. Carrying out a strategic plan, there has that component that's often missed that I've seen in government where you trust your employees, but you have to verify the work's being completed to the standard level that we expect.
Thank you.
How do you evaluate and manage employee performance?
That's very important, too. It's a great question. Performance is based on where we set the employee up for success, make sure we're hiring the right folks, retaining the right folks, removing the obstructions that are in place, preparing them for succession planning, preparing them for the long-term success of the citizens as long as it's aligned with the vision of the community. The tools that you use are different metrics, and it varies depending on what the discipline would be, whether it's parks, you're looking for engagement, make sure that the optics of the parks are in place. If it's the police department, make sure that the community trusts the police department. If it's the fire department, make sure the response times are within reason, make sure the expectations of this commission and the citizens are being carried out by our employees grouped. And when there's failures, when there is training needed, you create performance improvement plans around that, then you check back in and make sure that with the leaders, the managers that are leading these folks towards success are holding accountability, number one, and number two, making sure the employees are succeeding according to the plan.
Good afternoon. How do you ensure transparency and ethical decision-making in your work?
That's a great question. Transparency is really important. Today, communication can happen in many different formats, whether it's social media, whether it's press releases. I think one of the things that we need to do, and I'm sure that this commission would be engaged in this mindset, is getting folks on the front end to be a part of the planning process, being a part of the decision-making, whether it's policies or projects, initiatives, getting our citizens involved at the front end and being transparent throughout the process, then closing the loop and showing where we're at during the process and when we execute on a plan. Ethically, that's probably one of the strongest things I can bring to this organization or to this city. I've been tried, I've been tested in many different forms. I can't speak publicly about some of the things that I've worked on in my career, but they were directly in line with integrity and ethical issues and holding the line, and I can bring that to the community. I know how to navigate those types of issues and address those issues, working with labor council, working with the city attorney, and addressing those matters in a professional way, a diplomatic way, and protecting the name of the city and the standard of law. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chad. I want to thank you for coming and being interested in the city of Adrian's position. So can you describe a time when a city project you were managing faced significant public opposition or there was some political pressure against it? And how do you address those concerns and keep it on track?
First thing, when I think of a project that I was in charge of that faced some opposition, especially internally, had to do with a civilian oversight committee. As a police chief, you remember, we all remember, the times of COVID and the results of what happened in Minnesota. Because of my role and responsibilities in Wayne County, I was called upon to address some of those issues. I don't know what relationship necessarily I had with Minnesota, but it was important for the community to hear from me. I created a civilian oversight committee. Internally, we believe we are the best police department in the state. We're not perfect, but creating that commission to oversee complaints of the police department, to provide feedback to me, to review use of force issues, and to look at bias complaints against the police department, that comes back to that question I just answered, is communication on the front end, to be able to stand alone for a bit of period of time and know what the right thing is to do, and to educate the elected officials around this initiative. I had quite a support from the elected officials on this initiative. In the community, there's, I'm from a very diverse community that went from a very conservative community to now it's becoming more of a progressive community, and there's a lot of folks who are like, why would you do that to your police department? And the citizens were calling for oversight. And to create that, get that on the front end, and build a program that everyone could believe in, that's how I handled it. I got out in front of it, I helped develop it, I received grants to pay for it, I designed it. It's now, it's been modeled in other places throughout the country. I spoke on it many times, and I'm proud of it at this point. I can tell you one thing, though, during that process, it was tough, and you have to acknowledge there are tough times in municipal government, and that was one of them for me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. If you could describe a time that you had to lead through a crisis, then what did you learn from the experience?
Okay. In my career, I've been involved in many types of crises, whether it's an officer that's been killed on duty. The one that comes to mind immediately was one that affected the organization internally tremendously is when one of our officers was killed off duty and preparing that notification to family, preparing that notification to someone that'd been there over 20 years. Preparing, this was even a more special situation in my mind because he had been a school resource officer, and there was children and just years of children had been taught by him in the schools that were impacted, so it was a bigger event from that regard. And be able to delegate some of the responsibilities to organize funerals, a police funeral on the back end of that. That was a crisis internally, they had to manage with some of the emotions that come along with a death like that. Another crisis, I think, was most recent, we had an individual that was killed right in the middle of the city, in our township, right in front of many citizens, and it was, there were some overtones that needed to be addressed by the police department between the parties, ongoing neighbor issue, and addressing how it impacted the community, how it impacted businesses, how it impacted employee groups because they had dealt with this individual that had a mental health condition that went unchecked and ultimately led to a death. So all those issues to address publicly for many months and still to today because the trial is about to start soon. I've dealt with a number of crises and I learned a lot, and I can tell you what, getting out in front of it, communicating to the public, working with our nonprofits, working with our internal leaders, our stakeholders in the community, makes the job of the, in this situation, the role of the police chief really in Canton mirrors a city administrator, and being able to engage all parties in a community to tackle that as a community really was beneficial for my experience.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Can you describe for us your experience creating and managing municipal budgets?
Yes, I've been very fortunate. I can say that I have a budget over $32 million. I have $47 million in assets for our department individually, for the police department. I work with the finance director quite often on our CIP for the township. We have around $150 million budget for the community. I'm proud to say, running an organization at this point, I was able to grow. In the last year, our fund balanced from 43.5% to just around 55%, and we're going to need those funds because there's a lot of needs to continually grow and progress the organization. But it doesn't help, it doesn't hurt to acknowledge the fact that I do have the second largest tax base in Wayne County, just second to Detroit. So I'm very fortunate in that regard, and building support around that within the community. I never had to know from the township trustees, which is the version of the commission here, and gaining support internally and externally, building that budget. The way I look at it, too, every line item in that budget represents the daily quality life of our citizens. So whether it's $32 million, there's a lot that goes into $32 million, and things can be hidden, but that dollar, I treat it like my dollar.
Chad, could you share your?
Could you share your experiences with strategic planning and how you do align operations with the city's long-term goals?
Perfect. Strategic plan for the community, I was integral in developing the latest one with this group of elected officials. Internally of my organization, I've written them myself, by myself, and I've learned to delegate those operations to encourage full cooperation from the line-level employee all the way through, aligning it with the vision of the township, looking at the goals of the township and making sure our strategic plan aligns with those goals, make it flexible and agile enough because as we all know, you have something like a COVID pop-up, it changes operations. You have a major recession, things change, and I've been through all those issues back in 2008, 2009, changing those, being able to pivot and change operations a bit. Your strategic plan has to be flexible enough to adapt to those items, but I've been integral in a number of strategic plans, including developing the township's strategic plan that relates to a welcoming community and some of the core goals of our elected officials.
Would you please describe a time when you had to make a decision that was politically unpopular but necessary?
Number of times answering the call to the citizens that maintaining the standard of the police department is very important, and the optics of how we manage business is very important, and there's a call about not producing and providing mugshots. It's a very simple item, but it tugs at the heartstrings of certain folks in the city, especially some elected officials. I hold to the standard to what we've done for years, and every time I communicate and work with elected officials, and for the record, they're some of the most loved people in my life, and it doesn't mean we always have to agree, and communicating on the front end that this is our standard, this is why we're doing it, it's going to get foiled anyway, please understand that citizens are going to call for this. I understand that some people will say unkind things, but we're going to hold to our standard, and until the law says we don't have to produce those documents, we're just going to get ahead of it and be on the front end.
Can you describe a situation where you needed to educate the public? What was the situation, your actions, and the result?
You know, a number of times I've had to educate the public on different items, whether they're maybe more minor in nature, but as it relates to COVID or communicating press release, follow-up with social media blitzes, one-on-one conversations through Zoom at the time to communicate how we're going to get through this as a community. Another item is, in my community, it's really a touch point for license plate readers. You know, we have a huge budget, you do some pretty major things within some relevance of government, but license plate readers are a big deal, and it's pretty progressive mindsets and pretty conservative mindsets do not want them. So my goal is just to bring unity around this topic, bring in the director of ACLU, who's a friend, bring in her attorneys, bring in my police legal advisor, bring all the parties in play, call a town hall, and we'll hammer this out publicly, and make sure there's no concerns about transparency, and make decisions upon that. The outcome of that is, I didn't move the item at this point because the temper of the community and the elected officials was, they don't want it. So we're working with the legislature to bring some law around that because the main concern is accessibility to the records that the police retain. But to answer your question is to bring and coalesce around the topic so everyone knows the assets and liabilities of a program, and you can apply that to anything in government as long as the appetite of the commission is to have a town hall because those things can go sideways, too. So.
So Chad, have you ever had to lead an organizational culture change, and what challenges did you face?
Certainly. One of the culture changes I had was, we were always the leader when it came to the financial package for our police department. And when there was a crisis in policing, some municipalities increased their packages, and I was losing officers to other communities. During that, I would call it a staffing crisis. Keep in mind, we're one of the leanest organizations to provide the standard that we provide probably in the United States, I can guarantee in the Midwest. 103,000 people, it looks like we have right now, and I have around 100 sworn police officers, but I got down to 78, and people were coming to get our best. So I went to elected officials, we built a contract that was sustainable, that was built so we could compete, and in the last two years, we built our organization right back up to where we're at, and we're hiring the best again. That was a crisis for me because it was hard to see our standards drop a bit, and it was hard to accept, especially after, at that point, around 26, 27 years of service. So got a lot of support from the elected officials, they knew it. The one thing that we do in Canton, we get it right. It does take us some time, sometimes.
Tell us about a time when you had to manage a project that involved multiple departments or agencies, and how did you coordinate those efforts to ensure the accountability across different teams?
I've created a number of, I'll answer that question in multiple ways so you can see. I'm trying to show, you know, there's some agility to my career, but I've helped create a number of task force, whether it's with the Department of Justice, I'm the fiduciary for 75 agents that are seated in Detroit, and coordinating with the US government and many different agencies, from the military to Attorney General's Office to the local police departments that participate with us, state police, and bringing that all together as the fiduciary, working with those agencies, putting an MOU together that everyone agrees to, working with many different attorneys to address this issue, addressing issues around forfeiture, which is huge, a lot of police departments are driven by that, not necessarily can, and working with all those folks to deliver a product that targets narco traffickers. I'm not talking about user-level folks, we're talking about south of the border into South America, that's the target that affects our state, and working with those 75 different individuals essentially coming from the different areas of the federal government and local levels. Locally, working across all many disciplines, the way we attack a project, we did like a $6 million upgrade to the building and working, you know, transitioning to another topic here, working with different disciplines within our organization, maintenance, vendors and contractors in our building to operate a revamp of our police building, an active police building that has two to 4,000 prisoners come to it every year, and redoing the whole building, knocking down walls, improving HVAC systems. You do that through not only meetings but executing the plan from those meetings, making sure people are held accountable, make sure they have the tools to do the work, make sure we're on budget, we were on budget, and make certain that people understand the goal of the project, communicate it, trust, then you verify.
Can you describe a time when you had to navigate community resistance to a proposed project or policy?
Community resistance, the only thing I could ever say that was resistant from my community was bringing in fixed license plate readers to the community, and I can't say that's the majority of the community, it's just the people that were more interested in local government, and they showed up to meetings. The one thing I think is important is, especially as a city administrator, is when you're addressing those items, is to communicate clearly. Remember that the city administrator, the police chief, the folks leading the different areas of this suite of services that we provide our citizens, we're focused on service, we're not here to take political positions. We're here to support the vision of this commission and the citizens. In that situation, was it trying? Yes, because I know it could help the service level, but I do certainly understand the position of our community. And so in that regard, clear communication, follow-up with what it would look like, and that was the one time I faced true opposition in our town. That's the best example I have.
I'll read this question in its entirety and then feel free to ask what I said later on because it's a three-parter.
Okay.
If you could describe a time when you had to make budget cuts, what was the process you used to determine what items were reduced? How did you build capacity with your department, the public, and the community in the process?
Ah, interesting. I can think of one time where budget cuts of significance were in play, and when we go into meetings, I want to speak specifically about a revamp of an existing police building. In that situation, when you ask someone to come in to build something for you, it's been my experience, it's going to cost a lot more than what you expect. I always liken it to like when you ask a wolf, what type of meat do you want, and they say, I want a lot, and that's essentially what happens, is you scale it down. But when it comes to budget cuts, this project, I knew was, there wasn't an appetite for a $12 million project at the time, and it was going to come out about $12 million. So what I did was look at the situation and scale it to what we actually needed at the time, working with the vendor, the architect, working with the key people within a building, the subject matter experts that understand what we need, the maintenance individuals, the engineers in our building and that we're connected with, understand what we actually needed to accomplish the mission. So we reduced the items that were more wants than needs, and we focused on that. We scaled it down and we marketed it internally. I mean, it was not a total loss to the individuals that worked for us because they just had $6 million come into the building and change many parts of the building that were important to daily operations. While it was not a full Taj Mahal revamp, it was a beautiful outcome for everyone. So it's about communication, closing the gaps, cutting the needs when you have to cut the, or the wants instead of the needs, and building support around that with the elected officials, and of course, one of the most important people I've come to deal with is always the finance department. So you need the finance department.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chad, could you, the first state over group, including residents, citizens, and elected officials?
Certainly. Diversity comes in different formats. In my mind, from my experience, it's not only the function of their life, it could be religious, it could be cultural, it could be both. For instance, tomorrow night, Saturday, I'll be an honored guest as they speak at a function. It's called India Day. It's 30,000 people are going to be there. I'm certain I'll have to speak, and I guarantee I'll be more nervous right now than I am tomorrow night, so. But at that function, how do I interact with those individuals of our community? I explained when I took over, we had what we called the Hate Crimes Coalition, and essentially that commission, that committee was built and is built to be the voice of different cultural groups that maybe are not aligned with government. Don't trust the government, where they came from, maybe they can't trust the government. When I took over, I asked for it to be renamed. I asked the group, come up with a different name. We don't have too many hate crimes, and we came up with a canned coalition for inclusive communities. I engaged with that group quite often. I built a civilian oversight committee as a subcommittee from that group. I work with, I think about my life often when I'm driving, you know, especially when I came out here today, and on Sunday, you know, the last one to leave my church, Tuesday night, I'm golfing with a group of sick individuals from our community, and on Friday night, I'll be with an Indian group, which is a different group. We have the most diverse community in the state. We have the most diverse community in the state, in my opinion. We've, they speak over forty seven languages in our community and to be able to be that voice for them and understand our service, that their police department, their government, um, operates for them. And a unique thing about a police department, I'm sure your chief, Emmerich understands it too, but I, I definitely have it in Canton. In some cultures, the police chief is like the president and, and I end up having to speak and like, there's the mayor, there's a supervisor, why don't you talk to her? But often I, you become the focus for government. And I ask that because I'd also ask this commission if I'm fortunate enough to be in this role here. We have to remember core services and I must state that your face of government at three thirty in the morning is your police department and that there's an honor to that. And our groups will represent your, uh, vision and that'll come out through me in this position.
This is my last question for you.
Okay.
Uh, what do you consider to be the biggest professional accomplishment? How would you apply the skills and knowledge gained to address a specific challenge faced by the city of Adrian?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. I think my biggest professional accomplishment is the outcome of my twenty nine and a half years of working for Ken. I would describe myself as a strategic diplomat. That's, you know, it's quietly determined and it's able to accomplish a mission. I can read a room, it takes me a while. I can read a room and make results happen for this city. There's a number of challenges I, I see as a pivot point. Many communities have pivot, pivot points. I think Adrian's just like Ken, you're gonna, you have a pivot point right now. You have a university that's closing. You, you have a, a large segment of your population that's concerned about their status in this country. And, and to lead through those items with strength and, uh, my biggest accomplishment is having all those things ready to go for you on day one. I'm a day one leader for you. I'm connected to this community. We can talk about that maybe at the end, but to answer your question, my biggest accomplishment is the culmination of all the things I've been through and experienced and led through from an officer undercover detective, a detective, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a deputy director, creating initiatives. Can coalition for inclusive communities, many task force, um, leading through many types of conspiracy investigations, ragatearing investigations from here to Windsor to Arizona. I, I know how to lead people and work with people and see other people achieve. I, I'm not here to impose, I'm here to lead and lead your mission and the citizens' mission.
What are trends that will have an impact on local governments in twenty twenty five and into twenty twenty six?
If you repeat the question, Mayor?
Yes. What are trends that will have an impact on local governments in twenty twenty five and into twenty twenty six?
I see it daily. It's, one of the things that we see is a, a transition in government coming, uh, right now with, um, the new administration and executive orders that coming through and the interpretation of those at the state level and they trickle down to local government. The trends that I see is just somewhat a disarray approach to understanding how money is going to trickle through, um, from the government that usually supported different initiatives. I can see grants are very much drying up, uh, across the, at least from our experience across, um, our region. I think it's going to be very important for us to have great connectivity to our, um, county and regional efforts. I think, uh, city of Adrian is obviously a magnet for the, the area. It's so critical to the region. There's so, so many opportunities here. But the challenges I think are just a little bit of confusion that's coming through, um, and understanding how we can navigate through those things. But we do that through persistence, determination. And, uh, I'm fortunate enough to be in unique situations where I do have some connections with people that are carrying out those executive orders and they're working through it. And then some of the folks that are, um, the, the nonprofits that are helping try to understand that. Just having that network that those folks in my rolodex, I can help leverage for the city.
Chad, can, can you provide an example where you needed to increase, uh, the effectiveness of a team member? Uh, what was the situation, your actions and the result?
Yeah, that's a challenging question. I'd be mindful as a public meeting, um, an open forum, but, uh, I've had folks that were not, um, I've had individuals that had acquired, um, rank. I've had individuals that have, um, there were leaders that, um, that were not achieving the desired mission. That's the bottom line. And it, it is time on contact. It's, it's reps with them, building accountability measures. This is what's expected of you. Clear communication, being transparent and following up to make sure they, they met the goals. And you can do it through training, do it through, uh, one-on-one conversations quite often. There's, there's things going on that are causing that and providing services around that and getting those folks back in line. I've seen negative outcomes where people didn't succeed. I've been involved in a number of, uh, terminations over my career and, um, the accountability component is important. But also the caring and the tone and manner in which you accomplish that mission is so important too. The tone and manner is, I'm, I'm sure you've seen it, that, that the individuals that carry out our vision, the culture that we create as leaders, um, is so much more important than what we write down on a piece of paper. Because those folks carry it out daily for us, so.
This is the last question, is that what you're saying? Okay, so perfect. Um, how would your staff and peers describe your character?
First of all, I can use a sarcastic term that I'm sure the township clerk wouldn't mind. He said, you're a boy scout, Chad, you're a boy scout. But, um, the reality is, I, I use the term before, I was a strategic diplomat. I'm a person of integrity. I'm a person that delivers results. I'm very conscious of the tone in which I present myself because, um, immediate results are just as important as those long-term relationships because, um, those government employees, they're going to be with us a long time. And we need to make sure that they're engaged and they understand the vision. So, um, the tone and manner in which I carry out my day to day, I, um, are relying on very much because it, it's brought a lot of success for me. But I'm a person of integrity. My closest people that I've worked with, to be honest with you, are most of retired now. So I have another group of folks that I'm working with now that, uh, um, that work for me and they're, they're exceptional. We have some of the best people. It, what, it, I know I don't want to extend too far here, but there is a great comfort being here today because I've did a lot of work on the backend to create a succession plan to know the day I walk out, Ken's going to be just as good and probably better because of the folks behind me are exceptional.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Ange, may I ask a question while we're waiting here?
We're going to wait for the next interview. There's like a five minute in between and then we will do, um, public comment at the very end. Is that what you're wanting? Is that what you mean?
And we can hear you folks with the microphone, but here it really was challenging to always hear. So if this happens again, if you could request them to speak.
Yes, yeah, we will. Yeah. And I, I know she turned us up because I think you have to turn us all up in order to get that one turned up because we were all turned down to begin with. But yeah, we, we will, thank you. Yes, thanks. And I think some of it is, it's still down really low. I see it down low, so we gotta yank it up there a little bit. Thanks.
Wait, each socks, folks?
Yeah.
Great socks, folks. No, I'm a Baptist, I sit for that.
We're waiting for a commissioner. We will begin in just a second. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner.
We will be asking questions like in a random order, so we will begin that at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Davies, it's good to see you this afternoon.
Mr. Gals.
Could you tell us how, what's your approach to evaluating and improving city services?
Well, I think evaluating city services, improving them, one of the things that we need to do, it's, it's having open, honest communication with our staff. I think highlighting and discussing with them ultimately what our goal and what our vision is for the city. And first and foremost, that's ensuring that we're providing services to our city. So having honest conversations with our, with our employees to ensure that we're doing everything we can to support them, but also get their feedback and how they're, how they're operating. Having open, obvious conversations and feedback with residents. That's who we ultimately work for. And so that's one of the great things I, I love about my position is when I'm out in the field every day, I get feedback, right? We hear feedback from the commission. And if we go down the rabbit hole every once in a while, we hear feedback from social media. But really having those face-to-face conversations with residents in the field really gives us the feedback and allows us as leadership to adjust if we have to in order to ultimately provide those services.
Hello, Jeremiah.
Hello.
How do you translate the commission's priorities into clear and achievable mandates for staff?
Well, again, having those, receiving that feedback, ultimately the commission sets forth kind of the goals and the vision of where we want to go to serve our city residents. I think once we do that, and I receive that as a department head, then collectively with my staff and our leadership team, we put together a plan that best addresses on how to reach those obtainable goals. We leverage the strength of our, our staff members and we constantly, with any goal-setting situation, you always want to go back and revisit because it's easy to be an idea person. It's easy to, to throw a goal or a figure out there, but unless we're revisiting those, we're not going to achieve our goals. Thank you.
How do you evaluate and manage employee performance?
Before you evaluate and before you manage any of it, again, it's, it's having those clear-cut goals and expectations, right? We have to communicate, especially me as, as a department head. We're here to provide services. We're here to improve quality of life for our residents. And so once we understand that it's my job to communicate that to our employees. And so once we do that, set those clear expectations, have communication, and then it's continual evaluation of those employees to ensure that we're being efficient and we're ultimately working toes, towards those goals.
Good afternoon, Jeremiah.
Good afternoon.
How do you ensure transparency and ethical decision-making in your work?
Well, I think that's one, being grounded in transparency. We can do that in a number of ways. Again, having those clear expectations, um, being very clear with our documentation, being very clear with residents. You know, we get questions all the time. I get questions all the time. Where is your department at from a fiscal standpoint? And I like to highlight those things. So again, we have to be rooted, we have to be working towards those goals all the time.
Describe a time when a city project you were managing faced significant public opposition or political pressure? And how did you address the concerns while keeping the project on tack, on track?
Good question. I would say in my four years here at the city, I haven't really had a project as of yet that there's been a ton of opposition. However, there's been tons of questions and I'll go to, uh, Bone Pool. When I started with Bone Pool, we had just entered into, um, a study with a firm to kind of highlight and lead us in the direction of the pool. And if you remember, um, a little over two years ago, those findings were brought to us and they threw a figure of anywhere from twelve to fifteen million dollars at us and that really didn't suit the goals and where we were at as a city. And so I was charged with taking a phased approach, which we've been doing. But one of the things about that project, again, Bone Pool is a huge quality of life, um, service and amenity that we provide to our citizens. And so obviously big-ticket items such as Bone Pool and where we're at with that, that allows for continual questions. And so that's one of the great things about my position is I can have these conversations and bring this information to our residents. And that's currently going on because we are in a phased approach right now. So we're working on phase three and so we're going to have phase four and five. And this is continual conversations with our residents.
Describe a time you had to lead through a crisis. What did you learn from the experience?
I'm going to reference back to, uh, my time as a United States Marine. I served, uh, during the, the war in Afghanistan and Iraq. And as you can imagine, different situations arise to that. And I would call injury, loss of life, things of that nature, a crisis, right? And when a team sustains those types of thing, that's detrimental to a unit, to its cohesiveness. One of the ways that we have to do is as leaders empower our team members, our staffmates, let them know, be consistent, right? They have to look to you for consistency. It's easy for us to say, hey, I support you, I'm there for you. But unless we're consistent every day with that, then we start to lose trust in those. And so I had many experiences where we sustained different things of that nature. But it was important for me and the other leaders in our unit to be consistent. But it was important for me and the other leaders in our unit to be consistent, be supportive and be empowering of our team members.
Afternoon. Can you describe your experience with creating and managing municipal budgets?
Well, for the last four years, as the Director of Parks and Recreation, I spend almost every single day deeply dived into our general ledger, looking at our budget. With our budget, we receive general funds, but we also have the fee estate, which is a supplementary trust that's been there to help us execute the plan of our department and of the city. So every day, it's an important look to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible. But it's also planning not just the next six months, the next year. We're looking three and five years down the road. So it is important with just a small amount of funds that we have to be lean. We have to be efficient. And so I take that very seriously. And that's what I do on a daily basis is dive into where we're at financially and also making sure we're aligned with our strategic plan and our strategic goals as a city. Thank you.
Jeremiah, I'd like you to share your experience with strategic planning and how you align operations with our long-term city goals.
Well, I'm going to reference back to the last couple of years. I've sat in and was a part of our strategic planning as a city. And as a department head, I sat in on there, provided my feedback along with conversations with you all that were a part of the commission at the time. Part of that, and how do we align that, right? We have those goals. You set forth, you know, your goals and the vision for the city. So it's important for me as a, as a leader and as a department head to communicate those goals and those where we're trying to go, those trends that we're trying to, to accomplish. So it's a daily conversation with our staff. Ultimately, it is my responsibility to ensure that our department is playing our ultimate role in the overall picture.
Jeremiah, could you describe a time when you had to make a decision that was politically unpopular, but necessary?
I don't think I'm faced with that too often. I will say a very recent example that's been a bit contentious. And I really think that came down to misinformation was the recent discussions around the Civil War monument. So before I started, money was accepted. There were some loosely put together plans. Since then, nothing has happened. And so as my, spent the last four years, that has kind of resurfaced. And so working with those private groups and those private people to try to get this, this accomplished. Eventually, as a leader, I had to make a decision in regards to the loose plans that were put together. And that was unpopular with some. But ultimately, the decisions that I made were what I felt in the best interest of our park and of our city and what we were doing with the overall grounds down there at Memorial Park.
Describe a situation where you needed to educate the public. What was the situation, your actions and the result?
I'm going to reference a few years ago, Commissioner Roberts, when you started the Citizens Academy. As a department head, I was a little unsure where that was going to go and how that would work. But what's turned out and what's been great about that is being able to inform the public. And in particular, building those relationships with a lot of those members that have participated with that because I was able to dispel a lot of misinformation. One of the biggest things that some are misunderstood, the fee estate, right? So a lot of residents believe that I just have millions of dollars sitting in an account that I, that's readily available. And so that's when calls come in, emails come in. That's always a fantastic time for me to, to educate, right? And so I would say in the last four years, that is the biggest issue that pops up. If someone will call and say, hey, this is, this is going on. Why is this fixed? Why aren't we building this? You have the fee estate. And so I get to explain actually how the fee estate works. And really, 99.9% of the time, we come to an agreement and an ultimate conclusion that they're informed, they're understanding why we're doing it and how it's set up. So that's a, that's a continual, almost a daily, a daily conversation is being able to inform residents how we use the fee estate here at the city.
Jeremiah, have you ever had to lead an organizational culture change? And what, what challenges did you face?
Yes, I would say, and this is no discredit to, to those that became before me. When I came here to the city and took over the Parks Department, I was kind of charged. At the time, the administrator said, we need a culture change. We need a culture shift. And so immediately, what I kind of started was kind of a listen and learn occupation, listening to staff, observing, hearing what they had to do. And one of the things that was easy for me is to, to observe and to watch. But ultimately, the decision we had to make and the way we shifted gears is because again, we have a strategic plan, we have goals, we have a vision for the city of Adrian. We want to serve our residents. We want to, we want clean parks. We want roads. We want to address crime. And so as a staff member, I play a part in that. And so it was easy for me to see kind of where the shortfalls were. But again, being very rooted in transparency with our staff and being very consistent with them has really kind of shifted our culture, empowering them, letting them know I'm there to support them and letting them know that what they do on a day-to-day basis plays a significant role in improving lives here in the city of Adrian.
Tell us about a time when you had to manage a project that involved multiple departments or agencies? And how did you coordinate efforts and ensure accountability across different teams?
Again, when I came here to the city, the Parks Department was in a little bit of disarray. But at the same time, on the docket, there were projects coming up. There was the splash pad. There was a number of playground issues that needed done. We were building some infrastructure. And so immediately, it was all hands on deck. And one of the great things about that is getting to work with other department heads. The pickleball courts was another project that came together. And so really, project planning is looking at our goals, looking at our objectives, ensuring from a fiscal standpoint that we're, we're in aligned with that. And so this is kind of an everyday thing. We're constantly working with different departments, different entities. The pool is the biggest one. So we've, I've worked with two different firms so far in the execution of this plan. We've settled on one so far. And so for the last year and a half, it's been a great experience in setting measurables, setting timelines and following up. And so I'm happy to report that we are on schedule and we're still within our budget so far.
Can you describe a time when you had to navigate community resistance to a proposed project or policy?
Again, I haven't had a whole lot of pushback. And I'll reference again Bone Pool, right? This is a, is a multimillion-dollar project and there's been a lot of unknowns. And so when this project first started, we did community surveys, we did community engagements. And some of the feedback from residents is we want this massive facility. We want lazy rivers. We want all these types of things, but we are not in a position to do that. And so that's why we settled on taking this phased approach, keeping a community standard. And so kind of sprinkled into the last couple of years, those that wanted the big-ticket items have called, have asked, have caught me in public and said, you know, why aren't we doing this? And so it's been my job to relay the message that ultimately, we want to keep a community standard. We want a clean, functioning pool. While we would love to have all these additional amenities, it is just not in the budget. And so having those opportunities to talk to our community and bring them up to speed on what's going on, and it's always been positive interactions from that.
Next one's a three-parter. So can you describe a time when you had to make budget cuts? What was the process you used to determine what items would be reduced? How did you build capacity with your department, the public and the community in the process? I'd be happy to remind you of any of those.
Yep, yep. Budget cuts, process used, and what was the third component of that question?
How did you build capacity with the department, public and the community in the process?
Budget cuts so far in, in regards to our departments, it hasn't been to the point where it's been staff. And that's one of the big things that we, we really want to stay away from. But in regards to budget cuts, we look at, we have a wish list. Every year, budget time in the fall, we submit our, you know, our five-year plans. We also submit capital requests for, for the upcoming year. But it's important, again, when we make these requests and we sit with the, the city administrator and the finance director, and we truly talk out what we're, what we're pursuing. And budget cuts become easy, I think, if we follow and we align ourselves with our strategic plan, right? There, there's a guiding document that's been set forth by the commission. So again, while we want big-ticket items here and there, we have to make sure that one, those align with our strategic plan. And so when they don't, or the timing's not right, it becomes easy to cut some of those budget cuts. And that's kind of goes to the process used. Are we being fiscally responsible? Are some of these items necessary to execute our plan? Those are pretty self-explanatory, right? We can, we can do that if we're honest with ourself as a, as a leadership team. We can make those, those cuts. But again, that process used again is, are we aligned with our strategic plan? Is it going to help us meet our day-to-day goals? And if it's not, we need to put it on the back burner. We can do that. Building consensus and capacity with the community again, that's one of the great things about my position is being able to talk to residents, participating in the community academy, building relationships with residents, keeping them informed is continuing to allow us to build momentum and where we're going.
Jeremiah, we'd like to know how you engage with the diverse stakeholder groups, including residents, businesses and elected officials.
One that's making myself available, that's also pursuing conversations. One, whether that's attending, lots of times I go and speak at our service groups, Kiwanis Rotary, building relationships there, talking with residents, being visible in the community, getting myself out and about, going to different local events allows us to have those conversations. I think I have proved that I'm very approachable. And so I start to get phone calls and emails from different groups saying, hey, we heard you spoke here before. It happened recently. The, the sisters from Sienna Heights reached out and said, hey, we heard you were speaking at Kiwanis. Heard you did a great job. Would you come inform us on your day-to-day, what your budget looks like, all those types of things?
Apply the skills and knowledge gained to address a challenge faced by the city of Adrian.
My biggest professional accomplishment, I think, is being here today, right? Being here with the city. For me, as a professional, I constantly want new challenges. And so coming from different organizations to here has for me been reassuring that I'm doing what I'm supposed to. I'm working on my education. I'm constantly getting better. So putting myself in a position today to have these conversations with you is a big accomplishment. And for me, I can look back and ask myself, well, how did I get here, right? It's been through hard work. It's been through consistency. It's also being, having humility, right? Because I've tripped up, I've made mistakes along the way. But I think reevaluating, revisiting my goals, looking at them and also seeking mentorship from different people has kind of led me to where I am today.
What are trends that will have an impact on local governments in 2025 and into 2026?
Actually, that's, that's a good question. I have an answer for that. So as a lifelong learner, I spent the last year working on accreditation through the ICMA. And so every couple of weeks, I tried to set in on different webinars covering a number of topics that affect municipalities and local governments. One of the things, the introduction of AI into the workplace has been a trend. I just sat in on a webinar a few weeks ago on how to navigate the power of that. Also the accuracy and ensuring that if it's being used, it's being used correctly. Other trends, again, with technology, improving cybersecurity is a big thing. That was kind of coupled with that webinar that I participated in. So when I think also affecting us, I look at the world around us. There's a ton of volatility, a ton of volatility. And we're starting to see that trickle on down to the local level. We hear our residents talking about fear a lot with our residents and a number of different issues. So it's important for us as leaders in our own respective departments, but, but at the government level to really investigate and pay attention to those things. But I think, you know, that's just a few, right? Cybersecurity, AI and also addressing fear because of the volatility, volatility in the world today.
Jeremiah, can you provide an example where you needed to increase the effectiveness of a team member? What was the situation, your actions and the result?
Um, I don't want to get into particular details out of respect for personnel, personnel issues here in the city. But I've known, I've looked at every organization I've been a part of where, where I held a, a leadership role. And so not just personally, but, but, but across the board, we can look and we can find employees, staff members that may be struggling. And so I think the first way to address that and what I've had to do in these situations is take it as an opportunity for both that employee and myself as a leader to get better, right? So pulling them in, having a face-to-face, reiterating our expectations as leaders, making sure that our actions are aligned with our goals and where we're going and what we're doing. I always say here at the government, you know, at the municipality level, we're, we're not making gidgets. We're not making products. We're providing services, right? And I think it's easy for us as professionals at the leadership level, at the labor level, to ensure that we're doing the correct things. And so again, having one-on-one conversations, making sure that I'm providing all the supports and the tools that that employee needs to get better.
Jeremiah, how would your staff and peers describe your character?
I believe they would describe me as someone that's open, that's honest, that's transparent with them. I like to feel that they would describe me and my leadership style that goes along with my, my character as, as someone who's a servant leader. I always tell them all the time that I believe in them, that they're the ones that are making things happen. I try to celebrate their successes. Obviously, as a department head, I'll receive, you know, a pat on the back. Hey, this project looks good. These things are going well. It's not me, it's my staff, right? I'm here to empower them and do everything I can to support them. And so I believe that they would say, he's someone who's honest with us at all times, even when I have to be brutally honest. Sometimes I have to say, hey, we're not cutting it, but what can we do together to get better? And so I, I believe they're going to say, I'm honest, I'm transparent and I'm very supportive.
How do you bring people together to work on a difficult issue?
I think you bring people together by highlighting the goal that we're trying to achieve, right? We, we can put things in place and we can talk about them. But I think we bring people together. We discuss it open, honestly. We discuss the different roles that each one of us can have and reaching that ultimate goal, being consistent in the empowerment of those. But I think just being open, honest, transparent with where we're trying to go and how we're all going to play a role in that helps bring people together.
Can you tell us, how do you properly plan and manage resources?
Well, by properly planning, again, when it comes to objectives, we, we have to ensure that what we're doing, we have to understand why we're doing it, right? We have to ensure that what we're doing and we're planning from a project standpoint is aligning with our ultimate goals. I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you, could you give me the second part of that again?
How do you properly plan and manage resources?
I think, back to the point, how we properly plan, again, we have to ensure that we're aligned with our strategic goals. We have to, from a budgetary standpoint, ensure that we're working within the constraints of that budget. And then from there, set timelines, have measurables that we need to follow up and constantly revisit to ensure that we're reaching our goals.
That is, yes, because we're out of our, the questions we're supposed to be asking? Or do you? How do you want us to proceed?
I do not think it's appropriate.
I don't either, but I just didn't know, I didn't know if you wanted to. That's what, that's what I was. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
Our next interview will begin at two o'clock, just to let everybody know the schedule again. Thanks.
DC?
So, uh,
How you doing, Gary?
Good. Yes. Hey, this morning when I was leaving the wife, with a young man standing at the end of her home, says, "It's been a long time."
Oh, really?
Yeah. And he was a, I didn't, I would say he was late twenties. I should have gone back and thought, you know, someone was calling. Gary? No, not Gary. What? Yeah. He said, he was my great uncle.
Really?
I even said that. I hate to say it, but he loved, loved sitting there, comes to his house.
Acknowledge.
Yeah. But that's where they were.
Well, he goes, you have your left camp.
You're coachable, just do.
Coach, yeah. What are you coaching? More than sports.
So he failed in some of.
Discipline. You know, it's very good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very correct. Trying to do double sessions. So we have to have an audio session. Let pay for a while. There's a battery out there in South Bay. There was, you remember Reese, our people used to be out in South Bay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. And I grabbed to do practice and learn the cruise.
I saw it, yeah. Yeah.
You stayed at the, I don't know. So, over the race, you only come in with us. I understand, but also that I understand it's, and this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing. So, well. I'm there. They'll make him wait a bit, that's nice to work on. That's a, that's a, that's a great, great. I know, first thing, I know, first thing's that. And we had a commercial in the article. So he lost the Spanish six. I'm just going to do it today, like, like, starting from the same page. That's me. Obviously, right? So last year, we looked. Average forty-two points in football and has six championships in all here. I'm laughing, you stand.
Man, it's been a few, a lot more years. Last fall, I'm not, they, they told us.
Much longer than I thought. So, I can tell you, I haven't. I hope that, yeah. Since, since forty, that's how many you sold. You were out. I actually got much basketball, but true. Seems happy. That's what's in the.
Yeah, that's why.
Oh, she did. That's the one you're right, right, yeah, that's right, that's what patient rights.
I know they're not. They need to stop. We're doing something. Yeah, we have heard, actually, we heard they were so nervous, so obviously they could never. Well, they're not together.
That too. But actually, you walk out. Hey, sir. Said something. Of course. It's last day of summer. We found it. For us. And he was. You know, they just called him the mayor's. He would prepare. Uh, my future. I was. And uh. There's there's time to be dead, so it's leaving me. These are. All who did it for support. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And and so. How so you that you're in? Can't do that at all.
Yeah, it was. When I, but anyway, that's how it goes. One night when we hosted at our house, which it was basically everybody was free. We'd be outside, you know, like. Everything. Book seven days. It's just like. Party's going down. That's the whole without importance. So I think. It's kind of like.
Job.
Mind. If you want. It was also. So. My name is. Not satisfied with the goal.
Say this interview.
Thinking on this.
Okay, or some. They can find you in the middle. I'll be.
That's all. You're the first guy. Yeah, I mean, well, you should go to your mind. So this call. Is in about. And to talk to. He put a lot of to. I understand wrong. Their question is spoken. He's on the. Yeah. Yeah. Like. I think so. Trust the one. I mean, I'd be beyond city problem. So because he wants to.
I know. But. Down.
Yeah, yeah. Like.
He showed all of it. Actually, what many favorites?
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, I'll tell you what, this Pentagon, I didn't like him. Did from a. A very honest, very. Which is. About. She but here. So. So whether. His delivery or something. You know, I guess he would be what we would call. Right. Like.
Or.
Yeah, well.
We're not pistol with. I beautiful. Change. I don't need to. Before. It's rational. Well. She. Yeah. I'm opposed to the end. So well, I started. I'm not real. I'm not. My. By your voice. Just. Let me ask you. You're just doing real horrible and I'm saying. I throw this. Smash this. The changing the arms. She's my vacuum. I'm going on that small coat. About picture. So.
And so. As well as. Well, I don't. Move the next phase. If you want. I think it is. Okay, so we got.
The. So. Why? Maybe. If she. Why?
Yeah. So. Some. Serious.
I rather. No. I don't know. Last.
Well. So. And listen.
Let you. Wow. Yeah.
So.
Oh. The. Because you. Really. I'm sure. Well, you got. The question. But.
We want somebody. Really.
I think. You're. It's absolutely. The real.
Well, they're. I I'm able to. Things that Jeremiah just thought. Yeah. That. I don't know. A lot of people. We want someone all over there. It's. Yeah. I don't know a person. Jeremiah, do you know a person?
No, definitely. Hands. I'm not. I can all be. Dr. He does good.
Well, it sounds like it.
They're. How.
And I'm. Well.
So. It's not. You don't. Real. Yeah. You wish. See what they have to do. That's. I'm supposed to be. He's like. People. Well.
They have some. Press. Actually.
All your bits. I got my king. Sean. He. Yeah.
He did. Sikes. There is.
And there.
Oh, oh, oh.
You know, but and God's like, well, are we coming? Should be. Don't.
Oh.
Boss. I don't know. I was more. Be.
Yeah.
Yes. Pregnant. First. Up. You're. I was. So. You should play. From. Jesus. They're.
That's. Wow. Yeah. Guys. We live on. In. City. And then spray. It's like. You know. Now he was.
You want. Stop. You done. Who's you that? I.
A lot of. So. We're getting. Yeah. And they.
Say.
Yeah.
You.
This.
Thank you. I always. That I can. It's very much. Have to change. I think. Even. Very. I'm so. Yeah.
I think you're hardly experienced.
I'm just. I will say. Questions. Just. Free.
I'm like. I said. I like stupid. I think. I love. The. You know. Yeah.
I'm kind of like this. Well, I'm living.
No.
I shot like you, Dave. You should speak to me. Gee. But so these they don't care about you.
Yeah.
Right. Have a nice. Riley.
No.
You just.
Rile moves.
Which.
On. Versus.
I know. Well, we get. He might tell you. Next day. The. I got. Mad. To. What he said. One. Oh, yeah, he is. Right.
Spending. Okay.
Good.
We. He.
Michelle, are we on? Okay, thank you. We gotta wait two minutes.
That's fine.
Sorry.
That's fine.
And then when we begin, every commissioner myself will be asking you a different question.
Okay.
One minute. You want me to do the Jeopardy song? Just kidding.
Do not. If you need to, go for it.
And Will, just feedback from the audience is speak as close as you can to the mic, because there's been difficulties hearing.
Okay.
All right, we will begin.
Well, we'd like to know what your approach in to evaluating and improving city services.
In. So as you know, I'm the utilities director, so my department specifically. When we evaluate our services, we actually developed an asset management plan for both the water system and the wastewater system. So we utilize that essentially what those plans are. Every piece of equipment, every manhole, every water valve, every water main, every sewer line, everything is in those. Are in those those plans. And and we look at those and we rank those based on criticality. You know, lifespan, how long are these things gonna last? How long they've been in the ground? We also look at things like water main breaks and that that's how we kind of determine what our long plans are as as to what needs to be replaced. And I think we could do that for other departments as well. I know engineering department uses a road rating system to rate their roads and to determine when when things are gonna get done, whether it's chip and seal. Or just a mill and fill or a complete re rebuild of the of the streets. So we do have some documentation. We have documentation. These books are this thick. So like I said, it lists every single asset that we own as a city.
Hello, Will.
Hello.
How do you translate the commission's priorities into clear and achievable mandates for staff?
Um, I just have to remind everybody, you know, at my level, I've got a level of supervision under me. I've got three superintendents. I've got an office manager. So I communicate with them very regularly, daily, if not daily, at least a couple of times a week. So anytime there's a direction from the city commission on whatever, on any topic, I'll get together with them and we'll discuss it. What do we need to do? How do we need to to make this happen? So it's pretty simple. It's just talking to them and figuring out what the goals are and let's see what we can do to get them done.
How do you evaluate and manage employee performance?
Well, we don't have anything in place. We used to. We used to have a system years ago, and I'm talking 20 years ago. It was a performance evaluation system, which in my opinion, at that, it was pretty clunky. And I don't I don't think it really worked. Uh, my department, I wasn't in this position at the time. I was at the wastewater treatment plant. And I think we were probably one of the last departments that actually utilized that. The problem was there wasn't any. You just, it was just a process. You you just, you just did it and you turned it in and nothing really ever came of it. So now there's nothing official, but staff is. We look at staff every single day, you know, it's like a constant evaluation. What can we do better? What can you do better? What can I do better? Because I I'm certainly not perfect. But it's just a matter of communicating regularly with staff, you know, at the various levels to make sure that we're we're constantly doing doing better. You know, just do good every day.
Good afternoon, Will.
Hello.
How do you ensure transparency and ethical decision making in your work?
Well, you you just. You you just let it all out. You you just make sure everybody knows what's going on. And a good example, you know. We've been going through taste and odor issues. We had the big flare up back. And man, it's been seven years ago now. And that was a time where it it was difficult to explain why things were because as someone that's in in the industry. You get it. But it's hard to explain to just the layperson how everything works. So you have to. You have to just be able to. Let people know. In terms that they're gonna understand. And that's not trying to knock the people. They just don't get it. There's plenty of industries and and stuff out there that I I don't know how it works. So you would have to explain it to me like I'm a five year old. And I don't mean that all the time, but but that's just the case. And the bottom line is we have nothing to hide. You know, in my business, we answer, I answer to you, I answer to to the city administrator, I answer to answer to Eagle. I'm not going to jail for anybody, you know? So everything's an open book. Whatever we do, it's it's there.
Good afternoon. Describe a time when a city project you were managing faced significant public opposition or political pressure. How did you address the concerns while keeping the project on track?
A project that faced significant political or public pressure? I can't think of anything that we've done in the utilities department that caused any political issues. Anytime we do any project, especially if it's a big project that might shut a road down. Um, it it interferes with the neighborhoods. So the best thing to do is try to communicate the best that you can. I can't, I can't think of any case where we've had any kind of pressure. Maybe you can think of something, but I I can't in 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 my time, in my in my time here. We've had, we've had some projects that have gone sideways a little bit, but they've always, we've always always gotten back on track.
Describe a time you had to lead through a crisis and what did you learn from the experience?
I I mentioned it earlier. It is not something I like to talk about, but I'm not afraid to talk about it. And that was the taste and odor issues from 2018. Issues that had have always been there since the day that lake was put in service. We had just gone through a significant period of time with the well field going online. That we didn't have the issues because we weren't trying to treat the organic material from the lake. But then as time goes by, that well field's been in service, we're not getting as much, causes problems, we're treating more organic, boom, we have a problem. So lots of people upset about that. Um. We got through that one. I could have done better. Again, this goes back to the fact of I wasn't sure how to handle it. I have in my mind that it's safe, there's nothing wrong. But I didn't take fully into to credit the people that said there is a problem. So. I could have done better. And now I know the key is get the information out there, like I said before, so that everybody understands. And we still get complaints and it's not as bad as it was then, but we still get them, but we get complaints about everything. The key is explain it, let them know what's going on. Most of the time they accept that, they understand it. Sometimes they don't. And unfortunately, those are the ones that just aren't going to understand and they don't want to understand. And that's okay, too, because they're they're entitled to their opinions.
Good afternoon. If you could describe your experience with creating and managing municipal budgets for us?
I might be the only one that actually says it, but that's probably my favorite part of the job. Uh, maybe a second. The favorite part is anytime a project gets completed, a big project, but. I live for the numbers. I love doing the budget. Obviously, utilities department has the largest single department budget, I think, I'm pretty sure. I love doing it. Um, every time it's every, every. Every year when it's time to start, uh, my approach is I I always send the documents to my superintendents and I say, tell me what you want. And they'll get it to me, whether it's the capital budget in the fall or the operating budget in the springtime. They'll get everything back to me. I put it all together. We have conversations internally on. You know, what's the most important thing that we need to do, whether it's a project and a piece of equipment? Um, and then we developed a. A formula, a spreadsheet on how to calculate rates every every single year to keep things in line and and kind of a a checks and balances method. So that's what I take on myself. And if I can't get revenues to match what our expenditures are. Without doing a significant rate increase, then we look at it again and we say, what 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 can we cut? What can we save? Maybe we can do this project in two different years. So maybe we'll budget for half this year, half next year. So that that honestly, that's probably my probably my favorite part of the job. I forgot who asked it, so I kept looking. Yeah, sorry.
Will, could you please share your experience with strategic planning and how you align operations with our city goals and mine? With our long term city goals?
Right. Um. I've participated in, I think, three strategic planning sessions now over 11 years since I've been in this position. Maybe it's been four. Um. Generally speaking, and again, I'm only speaking from my departmental perspective, there hasn't been a whole lot specifically geared to my department. But for me, it's always infrastructure improvement. We have an aging infrastructure. Ninety percent of our sanitary sewer system is pre 1970. So we know that we have things to worry about, to fix. Same with water mains, they're not that old, but we do have water mains that are, you know, 50, 60, 70 years old that we need to to replace. So again, in terms of strategic planning, it's kind of like any directive from the staff. If it's something that relates specifically to my department, I will sit down with them and say, what do we need to make this happen? And if I was in this position as administrator, it would be the same thing. Sit down with department heads, let's figure this out and let's get, let's get things done.
Will, would you please describe a time when you had to make a decision that was politically unpopular but necessary?
You might have stumped me on that one. Because I don't know. I don't know if I've had to make a political decision in my. And when I answer these questions, understand you know how long I've been here. Anytime before, any any position I held before I started working here is inconsequential, honestly. So I, so any question I answer is most likely going to be related to something that happened during my 26 years here. So having said that, I can't think of any. But if some, one of you knows of one, feel free to throw it out there, we can talk about it.
Describe a situation where you needed to educate the public. What was the situation, your actions and the result?
Okay. So we go back to that taste and odor issue from 2018. What we did in that was we did a study at the plant to determine what can we do better here at the plant or what are some of the options? And we we did a survey, we've sent that out. We we organized a town hall meeting at the water treatment plant. And despite all of the people that were complaining, we managed to get three people show up. So in that case, I I didn't really educate too many people. Um, but we do tours of the plants quite often and we do that with high schools, colleges. Um, other groups of people that would like to come out, educate them on how our treatment processes work. The community academy is another situation. I I love taking people out to the plant for a walk and I think that they love it, too. So I can't think of a specific situation where I had to educate other than. That specific case on how, what was going on with the taste and odor, what was causing it? We sent press releases out. And again, looking back, I probably could have done better.
Have you ever had to lead an organizational culture change? What challenges did you face?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming organizational culture just means the common beliefs and and attitudes and opinions of of a group. I've got a really good group of people that work in my department. We've got people come and go. We've got bad apples here and there. We've never, we stray. We do things that we get away from goals sometimes. And and we have to have some difficult conversations. We sit down, we walk through it, we rein it in. You know, and things get out of line a little bit, you know, six, eight months later or whatever. It's like, come on, guys, tighter, time to rein it in. I've never been through anything to where it was. We sit down and start from scratch. It it's never been that way. We, like I said, we've had turnover in the department and we're going through a turnover again. Um, but. I haven't had to, I haven't had to deal with that on a on a grand scale.
Tell us about a time when you had to manage a project that involved multiple departments or agencies? And how did you coordinate efforts and ensure accountability across different teams?
Almost every project that we do involves state representation typically through Eagle. So it's a matter of just coordinating with them on permitting inspections or anything else that they have to do. Um, we do that for every project. We've had some big projects in the last 11 years. Um, we've been fortunate enough to. I looked at the numbers the other day and in my 11 years, we've done almost $19 million worth of capital improvement projects. Whether that's water main replacement, sewer replacement, just purchasing equipment for the plants to make sure everything is working and up to snuff. Um. So as far as managing it, we just, everybody, we meet and we meet and we meet until everybody's on the same page. Work with the public works department quite a bit, especially when they're doing road projects. We try to do something. If we have water services that we have to replace, we try to get ahead of them. We might do it six months or a year ahead of them. We certainly don't want to do it after it. Sometimes we have to, but we we try our best to coordinate to do things ahead of time. Everything we do, unless you're at the plants, is underground and you don't see it. So.
Can you describe a time when you had to navigate community resistance to a proposed project or policy?
I can't think of one again. Um. My department is pretty straightforward, so there hasn't been any policies that I that I've had to navigate with the public. You know, it's just communication during projects, that that's really it, but I can't think of any specific cases.
I got a a three parter for you. So, uh.
Should I take notes?
Feel free to ask if you forget or when you forget. Uh, describe a time when you had to make budget cuts. What was the process that you used to determine what items were reduced? And how did you build capacity with your department, the public and community in the process? And let me know when you want any of these.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Well, the simple answer is, and I'm fortunate here again, because as a utilities budget, we're standalone. So in my role as utilities director, we've never had to make any significant budget cuts. In my previous roles in the wastewater plant, particularly, I think at the time I was slab supervisor, we had to make personnel cuts. Every department did and we we lost two people. Um, and one of them directly impacted my central area. So at that point, we went from three people to two people. And it was just a matter of each of the two of us that were remaining just had to, you know, tighten the belt and get to work, split the work duties. Um. And same with we we lost at the plant at that time, we lost a mechanic position. So it was just, you know, some things ended up getting shipped out to be repaired. Otherwise, everybody just chipped in and did a little bit more. I don't know if I got all three parts.
So, um, describe a time you had to make the cuts. What was the process you used? And how did you build capacity with your department, public and community?
Yeah, so for in in that case, again, it was just, you know, we we lost the personnel. We we made other budget cuts within, you know, the lab budget, you know, you you know, be careful what you use, don't make mistakes, don't be breaking the beak, break beakers and the and the glassware, you know, which is. Not common, but we did it enough, you know, so be careful that that kind of stuff, don't waste resources. And if if I was in a position to have to make cuts now, again, we would say. What is not necessary? That's gonna have to go first. Let's look at the capital projects that we have in store. What can we put off a little bit longer? What can we split up or what do we need to do now?
Thank you.
Will.
Yep.
How do you engage with diverse stakeholder groups, including residents, businesses and elected officials?
Can you repeat the first part of that? How do I?
How do you engage with diverse stakeholder groups, which would include residents, businesses and elected officials?
In in terms of elected officials. I interact with you as necessary. You always know where I am. You can find me somehow. So I've my interactions with you are pretty straightforward, I believe. I don't reach out to you unless I have to or if I have a question. In terms of the public, it's typically whenever there's a project going out, we will try to engage them, we'll send letters to the neighborhoods. They they provide phone numbers, whether it's my number. They, they provide phone numbers, whether it's my number or my superintendent or my foreman. I'm a lot of the time the first level for people to call and complain. And I engage with them and if I can answer their, sometimes I can't answer their questions because I'm not the person in the field. So I will make sure that the person out there that is doing the project takes care of the issues. So that's, that's pretty much, yeah.
Will, what do you consider to be your biggest professional accomplishment? And how would you apply those skills and knowledge gained to address a specific challenge faced by the city of Adrian?
Can you repeat the second?
Yeah, I talk fast, I'm sorry.
Do the first first.
Okay.
Okay.
What do you consider to be your biggest professional accomplishment?
Okay.
And how would you use the skills and knowledge gained to address a specific challenge faced by the city of Adrian?
I don't know that I can narrow down the biggest achievement and, and I'm not talking about myself personally because I don't. I don't do anything, we do it, right? It's, we, we're a team. I'm just a guy that's there to make sure everything stays on track and make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do and, and have everything they need to do it. I mentioned earlier that we've been able to do nineteen million dollars worth of, of capital improvement projects. And a couple of those were pretty big sewer rehabilitation projects. One of them was a three, three part project. And that was dealing with the old brick arch sewer, nineteen seventies era sewer that ran through the downtown area and part of the east side of town that when constructed in the eighteen seventies was a combined sewer. You might not have known this, but back then, everything went in one pipe, everything. And the Clean Water Act didn't come out until nineteen seventy two. So that combined sewer system was a single layer brick all the way around. And it was a hundred and fifty years old, so it, it was in rough shape. So we, we engaged in a project, had several contractors over the course of three different contracts. I think it was probably three, a three year project and we rehabilitated that. We eliminated some of the stormwater that was getting into the sanitary system. That was a project that we actually had a national industry new, magazine come down and do, do a story on that project because it was, it was a pretty big deal. It was big enough to deal to where the state historical preservation office wanted us to save part of that sewer. And we said, how? I don't know that we can, so we documented, we took pictures. But that, that was, that was a pretty big project at that time. So I would say that that's the best project that we've done. Maple Avenue Sewer, we had flooding issues on Budlong. They had had flooding issues in their basements for many, many, many years. And we did some studies and determined, we know, we needed to upsize the sewer on Maple Avenue. That happened in twenty eighteen, coordinated that with Eagle, coordinated that with DPW. They paved the road, great project, went very well. I think we worked with this, you were at the schools at the time? Yeah, so that, that was a great project. So part two. So skills and specific. I, I, the same skills, I, I love doing projects. I love sitting down and, and, and meeting with people and talking about projects. Because it's like you're getting something new, you know, and, and I would do the same thing for other projects. Sit down, let's sit down, let's, let's, let's figure out, do we have the money to do it? And if we do, what steps do we need to take to get it done? And if we can't find the money right now, what can we do now? And then what can we do later? Kind of a situation. Yeah, thank you.
What are the trends that will impact local government in twenty twenty five and into twenty twenty six?
Money is probably at the top of the list, revenue. I feel like municipalities are fixed income organizations. We only have so much money coming in. And that means we can only have so much going out. That seems to be changing. Politics. You know, maybe we're not an area of our state that's as important as another area. So unfortunately, state level politics is probably going to dictate where money goes in terms of grant money and, and things like that. Population decline, obviously, we know that the birth rates are declining. I graduated from Adrian High School, my class was well over three hundred people. Yours was probably well over three hundred people. It's not that way anymore, so we can see that. Fortunately, the population of Adrian, if you look back historically, probably going back to nineteen forty census, we're at twenty thousand plus or minus. And it hasn't changed in a long, long time. So I think those are the two biggest things that we need to worry about, just, you know, the birth rate decline. We need to get people here, we need to get families here, young people here, we need them in our school districts, we need them using our parks, we need them using our services. We, we need those people.
Will, can you provide an example where you needed to increase the effectiveness of a team member? What was the situation and your actions and the result?
One jumps to mind and I don't want to be too specific because it happened here. But it was a situation where I worked very closely with an individual and things weren't always done timely. And it was just, we need to sit down and, and have a moment. And we need to sort this out. You need to do better and it turned out very well. And things got better, significantly better.
Yeah. How would you, I'm sorry, let me start again. How would your staff and peers describe your character?
Boy, I'm going out hoping here. I hope that they feel that I am straightforward. I'm honest with them, I have an open door policy. If my door is shut, I probably got a group of people in there and we're probably discussing things. I'm def, I def, I'm honest, I'm straightforward. I, I I, I'm transparent, I'm caring, I, I want them to succeed. I felt that way too, the other, I, I taught for seventeen years at Jackson College in the math department. And anytime somebody did poorly, I, I did poorly. You know, if, if you're not doing well in the class, I'm not doing well teaching you, let's figure it out. So I'm compassionate, I, I always want to hear your ideas, your opinions. I may not share them, I may not agree with them, but I want to listen. And I think that's, I, I'm hoping that's what they think of me.
How do you bring people together to work on a difficult issue?
You bring them all together and you sort it out. You, you just, and you don't leave until you get it figured out. And that's what we've always done, you know, in my, in my time in this department. Obviously, I spent fifteen years at the wastewater plant. I had, we had more problems out there personnel wise than I've had in my eleven years in this position. So it was just a matter of we're all adults, let's figure this out. You know, you might have one bad apple, maybe a couple. Let's, let's, let's get it figured out and, and that's how we did it, we just sat down and we sorted it out. And, and we fixed it and we did, did we always fix it the first time? Of course not. But we worked on it and that's, and that's the best way. I, I'm a firm believer that ninety nine percent of things can, can get worked out by just having a conversation. Sometimes people just want to be heard, they just want you to listen to them. And, and, and that's, that's how we solve problems.
How do you properly plan and manage resources?
Again, we're, we're fortunate to have that great tool, our asset management plans. So we can look at those, we actually do need to update those, the wastewater, the sewer. One was done in two thousand, I think completed in two thousand eighteen or two thousand and nineteen. And we, we did that with the help of a SAW grant, a stormwater asset management and wastewater grant that we received from, from Eagle, that was a million dollar grant. So that, we, we took that document and then the wastewater superintendent, I basically took that as a template. And we put together the asset management plan for the water treatment plant and the water system. So that's a great tool that we can look at, we open that up every single year. We kind of have a schedule of goals on there. Some of them get pushed back because if you know how, you know, pumps and motors and things work, a pump. The, the, the pump portion, twenty years, typical lifespan. But sometimes you get twenty five out of it, so we reevaluate every single year. So those are the great tools that we have to use. And, and in terms of water main replacement, you can have a water main that's seventy five years old and it won't need to be replaced because it's great. You might have a water main that's twenty five years old and you for some reason get water main breaks on it. So we use data like that, how many water breaks, water main breaks have we had on this section of pipe? Okay, well, it's not that old, but clearly we need to do something about it. We televise our sewer system. You know, we're constantly out there televising that, that's easy to do, you can inspect sanitary sewers, you can't inspect water mains without digging them up. So we use, we use tools like that.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you very much, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I certainly.
Something proud. And you know. Does that mean we're gonna hit the finish line? We have started the race.
We are in the race.
Did you get Netflix?
It's funny you say that. I've watched. I don't know if I got all the way to the first episode. But I noticed immediately that there was no Georgia Brown House. Anything. So Kelly, as I'm watching, and she said, Georgia declined on how her display because her is smart, so we don't cover it with TV. Yeah, she did. And so it turned it off. And I'm watching it more.
But Del Bennett?
Yeah, they didn't do it. Ole Miss didn't. She laid off like fire.
I mean, it was.
I wanna watch that.
That's the problem. So I gotta have the time.
Yes. Yes. It's unfortunate.
It ends with last game Tennessee, yeah, beat by the nation. Yeah, was it this? I thought, do you like the SEC?
Oh, yeah.
I started all the good years. She said. Once. I, what I noticed.
They were, they were.
So I mean, both times we should have been great.
And them and Alabama.
I just.
But, you know. And then she's over there, she said. So that means, sorry, we really don't have to watch that. I heard of you. But, yeah, that was.
I'm gonna.
I mean.
Did you watch us seven? True.
I'm on my note like. Watch TV. I'm curious. Assistant coach here. West side of the state, it's a head coach. Then he went to work. Then he wanted to work for Tennessee.
Where?
He said, he would be like. But I'm sure he's responsible.
Oh, yeah. I would say so. I'd love. I always, I could go back.
Major change. I would have heard.
Yeah, there's nothing. You gotta make it all that so. That's. Oh, no. I told you I watched the first.
Brian Kelly sauce.
And I saw his wife. Brax.
Yeah, with his dad.
Not, not just where it was at. I'm talking the boss.
Did you see? Have you ever met with Rand Towns? Everything up there is Ryan Hill. Their new sports facility. There's new. I will just say. Draw slower and articulate. Still can't. Much as I think it is, being very clear. But I will just do it.
You're very welcome. I'm gonna take this.
Yeah.
How, how'd that go for an answer? I think that was a perfect answer.
Say it all, say it all.
Time is our next.
How are you, sir?
I'm here. Yes. There's a representation. You, you stick my right to the verse. I learned a lot.
How you doing today?
Better than today.
I didn't hear it.
Or I think.
Natural.
Sure.
You know the folder. Yeah. That's some. Brad, you've. The rest.
You know.
That's sort of sad.
And they didn't. So he told her. Those.
Yeah, that's. I think that's great though. Because the other thing. Yeah. That's what I say. My is not.
No, I have it. No, I should. Oh, yeah, I already.
Actually wrote these and. God, we got sidetracked. I was back.
Is it very sad?
I had to. Sorry that you said. For me. Yes.
That would be wild.
I didn't name my accident.
Yes.
Gee, it's hard. I'll offer. He's kind of. He'll be like, I need a B.
Definitely or speak right into it. I tried to, I guess.
Nice to meet you. That's right. It's nice to meet you.
No, it's a nineteen sixty. You're only a couple of years older than me.
Yeah. All right. Hello. We are going to be asking you questions, um, the whole panel, like in a panel forum. So just so you know, so we were going to start with Commissioner Gauss.
Welcome, Alex. Good to have you here today. What's your approach to evaluating and improving city services?
Thank you so much for the, for the opportunity to be here first. I really appreciate your time. Uh, can everyone hear me okay? Okay, wonderful. I'm just gonna move this up a little bit, get a little more comfortable. So when evaluating city services, the first approach that I take is to understand all the services that we have. So, but to do that, I would collect a group, uh, and go through with the department heads and understand all the different policies that we have. And the services that we provide to the community. Then I would talk to the community and listen to their reflection of how they feel about the quality of our services. And try to figure out what services are lacking that we're not providing. What services are we providing that aren't valued or used? And then I would look at what services are the gap? What, what's needed that we're, we're not doing for our community? Uh, and that's one way, the first way that I would evaluate our services. The second way would be from a financial and data aspect. So how, how are the services running? How is the program running? What is the health of the program? Fiscally, uh, do we have enough people working? Are the people taxed, overworked? Uh, so that's how I would initially approach kind of evaluating, um, city services from that point in time. I would look to see if we could add the gaps that we have. Uh, I would also look to see if we could improve the areas that need to be improved. And most importantly, the things that we're doing right, I would highlight and make sure everyone knows.
How do you translate the commission's priorities into clear and achievable mandates for staff?
I view my job as taking your policy and your vision and making that come alive with outcomes and progress. So for me, it's extremely important to communicate very well what your priorities are to the team. The way that I really love to do that, you've already started, which is your strategic plan. This is a really, really important document. This communicates to the team here and Adrian, what's important to you? This document, if, if collected correctly and it truly represents where we're headed as a city, can be used to then define goals, timelines. Uh, one of the items that I did, uh, recently, when we implemented a strategic plan, was I used a project management software. And I put our strategic plan in the project management software. It was a GUI interface. Everyone could see it, no matter if they were at home, in a different department, at city hall. And we put timelines and we assigned the goals to department heads, sometimes outside stakeholders. This allowed us to track the progress and it very, very, very clearly communicated not only what the task was, but who was responsible for it and the deadline. What I asked the department heads to do is to keep it up to date. So that we can run reports out of it regularly for the commission to see how we're progressing. And where we're not progressing, where we're held up. You deserve to know why. So all of those things are tracked in that software and I find it to be an incredible tool for communicating and also for ensuring that we're accountable for getting the task completed.
How do you evaluate and manage employee performance?
Employee performance first starts out by building that relationship. So for me, when I first start here, I will be meeting with all of my team and I'm gonna get to know them, their job responsibilities, what they like doing, what they don't like doing, where they have barriers, how I can help support them. Um, that's gonna be my first indicator is really the relationship with them and knowing them. And that is one of the key indicators of performance. And I'm gonna give you a really quick example before I talk more about evaluating performance. I had a great relationship with my DPW director in a previous community. And I knew him and I knew his work quality. And all of a sudden, it just started to change a little bit. Things were slipping that just weren't normally slipped. Um, mistakes were being made. I started to hear from some people that he was being absent a little bit more. So luckily, because of the trust and the relationship that I had built, I was able to go to him and say, hey, I noticed these things. Is something going on? Can I help you? And through the conversation, um, I even offered him, we have, uh, we had a, a company that would help with counseling for free for our employees. And I had suggested that. Um, but through the discussion and finding out, we found out that there was a mental health issue there. Mental health issue that was treated and he was back to work in three months and he was back to his old self. So I think that when you're evaluating performance, such a big part of it is a relationship and knowing the type of work and the quality of work that your team does because everyone is different. This most important thing too for evaluations is the job description and setting goals. If I just expect people to do their job, but I haven't told them how or what I expect, it's gonna be impossible for them to achieve a very high performing level. So I very clearly communicate goals. We walk through the job descriptions, make sure they're really what they're supposed to be doing. And then we build an evaluation that's quarterly off of that job description. We set goals in those evaluations. And then quarterly, we're checking in to make sure we're meeting those goals. And if we're not, what tools can I give you to help you? Well, how can I support you and why? Provide coaching and get them through whatever hangup they have. So that's how I evaluate employee performance. And I do it on a regular basis too. I say quarterly because I think quarterly, quarterly check-ins, just making the time to sit down for that hour and look at the goals. But every day, every day, I'm looking at performance and we're talking about accountability and what we're gonna get done. So I think it is a daily thing, um, and the most important part of it is really that relationship and trust.
Good afternoon, Al. How do you ensure transparency and ethical decision-making in your work?
That's a fabulous question and it is one that I have lived my life and my career for the past over twenty years. Let's just say over twenty years. So for me, you know, growing up in accounting, being a CPA, all of my work in government has had to be transparent. I have lived my life, my career life as an open book. So for me, the most important thing is that we're not only just getting out data, but that we're getting and being transparent, but that we're giving out the right data at the right time that's easily understandable and usable and really, really accessible to those who need it to be accessible. So for me, that is one thing that I think is so important is really just making sure that we're, because you own a website, you can go on any city's website, you can find so much information that'll make your head spin. I can't imagine being a regular resident or citizen and trying to weed through that. Um, so I really do believe in making sure that we're transparent with multiple layers of communication. Um, having things online, having things be sent to homes, having things in the paper, having things on the news and in the radio. Having multiple different layers to connect with our residents to be transparent. Also being transparent with all of you, using resources like technology, it's the project management software that I spoke about. All of the elected officials that I worked for at the time had access to that. They couldn't change it. They couldn't operate it, but they could look at it and see where we were at at any point in time. I took our CIP plan and I made that go live so that it had a live database on our website that showed all the construction projects. And then we would give updates weekly so that the residents knew, everyone knew what was happening in the city with our projects. Ethical behavior, us CPAs and accountants. We like ethical behavior. I think for elected officials, it's really important to all agree on a policy about ethics. Establishing what you believe to be ethical behavior and all agree to that will help you hold each other accountable. Uh, another group that I've seen work really, really well is an ethics committee to give us space for people in case they have concern, whether it's between elected officials, it's the team or even residents or business owners. Um, all of them, I, I've had use our services through that group. So for me, it's about having the policy in place, agreeing what we want, having the policy in place and then holding people accountable to that policy.
Very good. Okay, Al, describe a time when a city project you were managing faced significant public opposition or political pressure. How did you address the concerns while keeping the project on track?
I'm gonna walk back to, um, a treatment wastewater treatment plant project that I did. The project was a, a very, the largest project in the community that they had ever done. And it was met with a lot of controversy because they had huge problems with their utilities and everybody knows that it needed to get fixed. The system, the infrastructure and even the water itself. So there was big movement in the community to make this change. But when it came time to do the project, there were the groups around that lived all around the wastewater treatment plant who started to have huge issues with the construction. around the wastewater treatment plant who started to have huge issues with the construction. And even though they were small in number compared to the population, their voices were very loud. And through it, we started to see that the opinion of this new renovation was starting to shift and change and people who thought that it was a fabulous idea were starting, you could feel them start to pull back a little bit on their decision. We did a massive educational campaign. We walked through why we chose to do the renovation. What's going to be solved? What do we have in common? What are the goals that we all have in common that we want fixed? This is going to fix it. Then I listened to their pain points and I addressed their pain points. I took away their pain points to the best of my ability. Now, I can't take stink out of the air. I wish I could, trust me. But there are things that we can do to address it in the meantime. And so I deployed my team and I said, you guys are the experts. Go help me figure out a way to reduce the smell. And they were able to do that. But it's just taking those pain points and removing as many as you possibly can and listening, letting people feel heard and giving the people the right information at the right time.
Describe a time you had to lead through crisis and what did you learn from the experience?
We had a 50-year flood recently and we're in process of a renovation on our wastewater treatment plant. A 50-year flood while we're in the process of a renovation doesn't mix well. We had our equipment room that we had just put in brand-new equipment, electronic equipment in that we had to wait for in special order, got flooded and ruined. We have a timeline on this project. We have funding that has to be spent by a certain date. We don't have room to be behind. So what I did was I spoke with my team. There were a couple of things we needed to do. We needed to act fast. So we got a group of us together and we started to problem solve the different issues. So we had a group that was working on the replacement equipment. We had a group that was working on the cleanup. We had a group that was working on communication to the community. And through this, I also challenged them. Next meeting, I want everyone to come with what's going right, what's going wrong, but I want ideas, anything that you can come up with on waste that we could reduce the time before we end the, excuse me, end the project. And wonderfully, my superintendent and his assistant came up with the idea of bringing over some bugs that were already mature and developed from a different wastewater system and using those to feed ours, which ended up cutting 22 days off of our tardiness. So little things like that, coming together, making the communication out to the community and to all of you, that is what's most important. And two, also, this didn't have too much of a safety issue to it, but when we're in crisis mode, it's really, really, really important to stop and make sure first, everybody's Luckily, in the end, we're still a little bit behind in our project. We didn't quite make up all the days with the ordering of the new, the new equipment, but we're a lot further ahead than we were. And we're still every day continuously looking to how we could improve and create those efficiencies.
Can you describe your experience with creating and managing municipal budgets?
Absolutely.
One more time for the people on Zoom. Can you describe your experience with creating and managing municipal budgets?
This is my bailiwick. This is my favorite part. Watch for just a second because I'm going to get excited about a budget. How many people do you see get excited about a budget? I get excited about budgets. You know why? Because it's our plan. It's what we're going to do. It's the next year. It shows what we're going to be doing. With a budget, I will tell you, I'm disciplined. I like to have a solid budget. I don't like a lot of amendments and I don't like my bottom line to look different at the end of the year than it did at the beginning. Now, I know that's not a possibility to make that happen 100%. In fact, it's never happened in my entire career where the budget I started out with was the budget I ended up with. But I want to make sure that percentage of change is low and I also want to understand why there were differences. If there are differences that we can look at and say, what caused that? Is there something we can learn? Is there something that we need to consider in next year's budget that we didn't think about in this one? And I'll say this too, while I'm disciplined, I'm very, very, very strategic about my budget. I make sure that it's proactive and inclusive. Let's say we're going to build a new, put on a new roof in a building. We're planning for the cost of the roof. Are we planning for the maintenance of that roof? Do we know what that's going to cost? Is that in the budget? Are we saving up for the next time we have to put on the roof? Have we discussed what that might be in 30 years and how, and planned how we're going to take care of it? So I make sure that's inclusive. I also make sure that it's future-based, right? We are here to think about the legacy that we leave behind us. And so for me, I want to make sure that I'm setting up whoever comes in behind us in a way that they can carry the city of Adrian forward in the same fashion. I also really believe, you kind of heard me say the right fix at the right time. I want to know with our roads, with different equipment, when is the right time to fix it? Because if we just let our roads sit and we don't maintain them and then 20 years go by and it just needs to be replaced, that costs a whole lot more than if we do the right fix at the right time with patching and extending the life of our assets. So that's certainly something I work very hard with, with my department heads to make sure that all of those are in place and correct. I also set at the beginning of the year, KPIs and make sure that everyone understands kind of the metrics that we're going to be looking at for performance in our budget and that everyone understands the goal. When I start a budgeting session, I bring everybody together. First, we talk about the capital improvement plan. Then we get together and we talk about what everybody needs. And I want everyone to hear what everyone needs because it's very easy to sit siloed in my department. I think I really need this, this equipment. I really need this vehicle. But you don't see the fact that the rec center is failing and it needs a whole bunch of money and that that deficit and that help might be more important than what you're looking at. And collectively, it's amazing to see the department heads work together and give up different items for each other and give and take and compromise. After we do this, then it's time for me to bring in my elected officials. So bring in the commissioners and we're going to walk through that budget. You're going to understand why we're buying what we're buying. You're going to understand why our budget is the way that it is, not just see it, not just look at numbers, add them up and make sure they tie out, but truly edify what those numbers mean, the story they tell, and why we're doing what we're doing. And then lastly, when it comes to your end, we're going to, we're going to go through that budget together. We're going to say, well, how do we start? How do we finish? And you guys are going to hear the story of how that changed, why it changed, and what we're going to be doing differently for the next year to incorporate that.
Al, would you please share your experience with strategic planning and how you align operations with our city's long-term goals?
This is the age-old test, right? We have all these needs and we have this much money. My entire career, this is what I've worked on, figuring out how to set priorities so the things that we need can be accomplished with the dollars that we have. Building a strategic plan is incredibly important. I think that it should be done with intention, that it should be collective, well-thought-out, that the items that we want to see move forward actually have action steps and dates that are reasonable, that we can accomplish the goals, but we still want to make sure we're accomplishing those goals. And then, as I've talked about with the project management software, I won't go into all of that again, but to me, once you get that strategic plan in place, how many of you know how many goals you've accomplished from your 2023 strategic plan? Where are you at with it? Are you 20% of the way through, 40% of the way through? Me, a city manager, you're going to know. You'll know what, why we're behind as well and you know why we're ahead in some areas where we're ahead. So for me, that's how I would start out. And then the strategic plan to me is also a living document, meaning that as we move along, life changes. The city changes. Our needs change. So we have to keep on that plan and make sure that it, its goal is where we really want to go. Is it really where we want to go? Are we thinking of everything? So with the strategic plan, it guides the budget as well. I like to tie every single dollar that I spend into the strategic plan. That's the way it should be. If we are spending money, that means we should be working towards a goal and that goal better be in the strategic plan. So for me, a strategic plan also, so that's the way that I light it. When we go through and bring agenda items forward, different projects, I make sure to include how it aligns in our strategic plan. And if it doesn't align in our strategic plan, then I better be second-guessing myself while we're bringing it forward. So lastly, with accountability, I think it's really important for me to be reporting to you on a regular basis where we're at with different things. So not only are you going to get the regular updates, but you're going to get extensive updates with a lot of data, which you'll love, and we'll be able to look at it and you'll be able to use those data points to make decisions. And that's really how I use a strategic plan. It's just such a great guide for us. I think about one time, my planner went rogue and he got this grant for $800,000, right? It sounds exciting and great, we're all excited, but it was for a pathway in a park. That was not in our plan at all. We had work scheduled to do. We had resources allocated, human resources allocated. So when we received this grant for the pathway, it completely, you know, gave us scope creep. And before you know it, we're now working on connecting pathways and extending those out when that really was not a part of our strategic plan and it was not part of our budget. So I really use a strategic plan to make sure everything that we're doing is funneling us in to hit that goal. That is what we need to do. And if you tell us this is where we got to go, I'm going to take every part of me to create the momentum to move those items forward and accomplish them.
Al, would you please describe a time when you had to make a decision that was politically unpopular but necessary?
When I came into a city, our fund balance was really ugly. Projects had stalled. It wasn't good. So we needed to put together a plan on how to reduce costs. One of the items that we looked at was the removal of our own in-house dispatch. And it was a struggle because these are people we loved, we respected, but 95% of our calls were from cell phones, were going to county dispatch anyway. So we were maintaining operation that was almost $500,000 for 5% of the population to call. We heard everything from, oh, they're getting rid of the police. They're outsourcing the police. We're not going to have a 911 number to call. How we combated that was we sat down and we educated the public. We used my multi-layer approach. We started with not only town halls, web, website information. We talked about it in meetings. We put it in our paper. It was on the radio. So we really just walked through every single item that could be a concern and we just communicated that over and over and over again. And I'll let you know that now a year later, it's like it never, never happened. Everyone is functioning beautifully. The city is saving a lot of money and we're at a spot where we aren't having to pay $500,000 for a very small percentage of our population.
So hopefully, hopefully this doesn't sound repetitive based on that, but describe a situation where you needed to educate the public. What was the situation, your actions, and the result?
Okay, wonderful. Let's talk about trash, right? That's fun. Let's talk about trash. Everybody loves trash. You wouldn't think that trash would be a big deal. You know, it's, it's trash. But if you think about changing vendors with trash, with trash, how popular it could be. In a community that I was, that I worked with, we had our own private garbage collection. City employees, city trucks went and picked up all the garbage for the community. Let me tell you, these men were adored in the community. Women would come out and say hi to them, bring cookies for them and snacks at Christmas time. They had a relationship with the community. However, we couldn't afford to have this, have this, continue this, this service, this private service for them. And we had to look at outsourcing. It was a nightmare. Everybody was very upset. Their main pain points. So we started educating the public about how much money it costs. We started educating the public about the changes. One of the biggest concern was the employees. So we worked extremely hard and the company that ended up taking over and contracting hired almost all of the employees. The three employees they did not hire, we moved to our DPW yard. And that was one of the, the most important things because those same people that picked up garbage for the city were now picking up garbage for the private company. So they were still seeing they're the same people that they trusted to pick up their garbage. The backlash on this was like a wave, a tidal wave. People wanted to, you know, I can put anything out in my trash. You know, I know the people, I trust the people. So we listened to all their pain points and we made sure that when we developed our waste contract, that all of the items that were really important to them were part of that contract, making sure that they could still, you know, put anything out in front of their house that they wanted to put out in front of their house. And making sure that they still had the same people coming to do the route was extremely important to them. So we just removed pain points. We worked together collaboratively. We did a lot of education. We did our, we did our round robin layered approach again of communication, town halls. We did a video and we put it online and we also put a lot of information on, online as well. And still, and to this day, the private company that we selected still owns it and the last time I was there and checked in, every single one of the employees that had moved from the city was still working for that private company and doing that route.
Have you ever had to lead an organizational culture change? What challenges did you face with that?
So when I came into a community, I came into a team that was, the morale was really low and no one trusted each other. It was a situation where work was not getting accomplished because people weren't working together. Everyone was very siloed. One person didn't know what the other one was doing. So that was my situation. I had to come in, I had to, to ease the pain. So the first thing that I did was I listened. I took the time to sit down with folks and I listened. I heard them, I understood them, I asked questions, and then I did it again. I listened, I understood them, and I asked questions. And for me, that establishes that relationship with them. They know that I care about their quality of time in the office. We talked about priorities, we talk about the history, we talk about their desired outcomes, their operations, what they do. Showing and having a sincere desire to understand and know your team is crucial. Next, you know, I kind of assessed. So I looked at the team and I said, okay, where are my biggest pain points? How is the group workflow happening? Is there a more... Is there a more effective and efficient way to do this? What changes can I do? Now I've learned some of these pain points from my employees. How can I remove them? That's what I'm going to be looking at next, is how do I remove these pain points? So once those pain points get removed, then you're really starting to build trust, right? Okay, Elle cares. Elle's here, she listened to me, and look, she took care of that. It motivates people. It makes them excited, it brings energy. And that's what I want. I have a lot of energy. And I want the people around me to be full of life and happy because that is when we can serve our residents the best. And it's also when we have the most progress movement forward. Doing these things, meeting with the people, also giving them the resources and tools they need to be successful is extremely important. And before you knew it, it only took a couple of months, people were healing. I saw more people telling jokes and laughing. I saw a work product increase. Not only increased, but I saw the work product get better. My team was coming to me. I have an open door policy. And when things were going wrong, my team was coming to me. And that is a sign of a trusted relationship. And it's also the time that I most want them coming to me. Don't want anyone to be afraid of making mistakes because we all make mistakes. I want them to be able to come in and speak with me and know that I'm going to be there to support and help them through it.
We're more minutes, okay. Tell us about a time when you had to manage a project that involved multiple departments or agencies. How did you coordinate efforts and ensure accountability across different teams?
One of the communities that I worked for had in their strategic plan for 20 years to have a downtown green space. When I started to work on the project, I located available areas of land that we potentially could make a... Kind of make a project. So immediately I started working with my team, my planner, my assessor to go through the city and kind of see what open pockets could we find. Once we'd kind of identified those pockets, then we started to do some design work. And when I've located the perfect parcel, it was actually owned by one of our business owners downtown. Half and half was owned by the city. So we worked together and we created a public-private partnership. We actually ended up putting in a grant through the MEDC, a RAP grant, which you all should be very familiar with, for the park. And working together with downtown, having to answer questions about the construction progress and how that's going to impact them and how we're going to support them and carry them through, working with the business owners, tell you, it was one of the most beautiful meetings that I've ever seen because we had a full house come in support of that green space. And when they said, "Who supports the green space?", a whole room stood up. And for 20 years, that space was wanted and desired by that community, and now it's happening.
Can you describe a time when you had to navigate community resistance to a proposed project or policy?
So leaf collection. Another thing that seems pretty benign, right? One of the communities that I've worked in, the residents just loved their leaf collection, but it was very, very expensive. The city took care of it. We drove around, we collected leaves for people. In our waste contract, it already included leaf pickup. So we were paying double for services. What I did was we started to work with the team. We developed a plan. We came up with a kind of a Gantt chart of how we were going to accomplish it. We sat down, we looked at the cost, we looked at all the things considered. We did all of our metrics and we weighted kind of the important characteristics for us. And in the end, we were able to accomplish the goal and move it forward simply by communication, transparency, follow-through, a lot of energy, and good decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything to drink? We're waiting on one commissioner.
Again, the microphone is somewhat sensitive. It's good to speak right into it so everybody can hear. It's been a common request, so. This is...
Say the best for last.
You know, there'll be a little bit of a break. And then at 5 o'clock, there'll be a reception for everybody who can hear us.
Would it be okay if I did before the end of it?
Oh, yeah.
Because I gotta drive always to Nashville.
Oh, my God. Yeah, that's... Yeah, we'll have, you know, give you an opportunity to say a few remarks at the beginning. But usually, you know, people leave, you know, whatever you need to do. I'm just so glad that it's a big commitment that you've put into the process.
This is good. I like doing this. Nice meeting new people, new community.
Hello, welcome. We are going to have a panel here asking different questions between the commissioners and myself, okay?
Do you mind if I approach?
Yes, you can approach us, yes. Yes. Thank you. We will begin with our first question from Commissioner Gauss.
Thank you for having me.
Could you tell us what your approach to evaluating and improving city services is?
My approach to evaluating city services begins first with a good plan to help city services. There are a lot... There's a lot of work that has to go into what we do is to manage a city. And it's not haphazard. It is planned out and we have to monitor. We have to make sure that our people understand what they are doing, why they're doing what they're doing, and that they're responsible for doing what they're doing. That includes me. That's the first thing that begins, that happens, has to happen to make sure that we have good city services. Then we evaluate as we go along. Make sure we're meeting the goals that we set and adjusting when we don't. And making sure that you know where we stand at all times.
Thank you.
Sir, how do you translate the commission's priorities into clear and achievable mandates for staff?
You know, that is a good question. And I want to preface that by saying sometimes it's hard to get commissions and councils to set those priorities. But we have to set those priorities. And we need to meet... I like to meet with the commission council annually in a retreat so that we set and evaluate what those priorities are. And then I, as manager, have to take those back to the staff and make sure they understand what they are and put together a work plan so that you can measure that progress and can follow it.
How do you manage and evaluate employee performance?
Every year. Every year there's an annual performance. But every day there's an evaluation of what's going on. The best way to get them... You have to first make sure employees understand what their roles are. And then, now, that's not saying that I'm coming in and they're not doing it, but I have to understand what they're doing. They have to understand what... That if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And then there's an evaluation process that is done annually. I usually do that. But I'm a manager who manages by walking around. I do a lot of personal evaluation and personal teaching, instructing as I go along. If I see something or someone not doing what they're doing or understand that they're having problems, I like to call them in on the spot and sit down and see if we can address it. Don't want employees to be... Want employees to be happy and doing their work and understand our responsibility to the community.
Thank you.
How do you ensure transparency and ethical decision-making in your work?
Transparency is number one. I got to make sure... And it doesn't just go from me to you. It has to come from staff to me. And it is a process that all of us have to understand that is a part of the culture of the organization. And when it comes to you, believe me, you... A city manager who keeps secrets from the city, from his city commission, is a city manager that's in trouble. So you need to know what's going on at all times, the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Thank you. Can you describe a time when a city project you were managing faced significant public opposition or political pressure? And how did you address the concerns while keeping the project on track?
See, that's a big job, isn't it? Well, again, it starts with... It starts from the beginning. It starts with your planning. My biggest job, I'll just tell you, one of my biggest jobs last was changing out the whole water system in the city of Benton Harbor. We had been given two years to get it done, to change out the water pipes. We did it 18 in 18 months. And we did it because we planned it out. We met opposition because people were saying they can't drink the water because they still have to pay water bills and different things like that. But communication, I found, worked out a lot of the kinks in that system. Letting people know what they can... When they had concern, letting them voice them. I maintain an open door policy. I keep a list of every call that's made to the city manager's office. And when I say I keep it, my staff keeps it for me. But we then keep the date when it comes in, the date when it's farmed out to the department, and when it's closed so that we can know exactly what's going on. So when people want... And people have concerns about issues, talk. I found it works. And I don't... I've had people come into the office upset because they have preconceived notions. But once they shake my hand and we say hello, they usually calm down. I haven't had anybody beat me up in 100 years.
Describe a time you had to lead through crisis. What did you learn from the experience?
Management is crisis all the time. The biggest crisis that I've run into, I think the biggest crisis, was having to come into Benton Harbor after the emergency manager. I want to lay the groundwork here. First of all, I thought the biggest challenge was being able to avoid going into receivership. When I first came in as manager back some years ago, they were getting ready to put the city into receivership. Had already put a person in the city hall. Three months after I was there, he told the state they didn't need to do it. They had a city manager. So what I'm saying is... I thought that was the biggest crisis. But after coming in and finding a city that's been run by one of those managers who's taken the council out of their chairs, who's taken the staff out of their work and just basically telling everybody what to do and what not to do, fire people when they want, I lost... They had lost the staff morale. So the biggest crisis, if you want to call it that, I call it a challenge, was to get my staff to understand that they have somebody that cares about them. And we need to pull together to do our work.
Could you describe your experience with creating and managing municipal budgets?
Been doing it the whole time, my whole career. I've worked for some tough cities. You've probably seen in my resume. I've worked in cities where, as I said, I saved two of them from receivership. And it was because one of them, they couldn't balance the budget. I balanced that budget. And the person who was in charge of... They had already put into the city. I understand he threw a tantrum when I balanced the budget. But I worked with my finance director. That's the key. Working with the people that know what's going on. I don't know everything, can't know everything, and don't want to know everything. But I know I can work with the team. And working with my finance team, we were able to balance the budget. And I learned that early on. Let me give you some background. I started out in the Model Cities program. If any of you remember Model... You're probably too young to know about Model Cities program. to know about model cities program. But that was the first time that minorities became, came active in city, in city government. And in the model cities program, they carved out what they called the bad area, the toughest area of the city. And then we had responsibility to bringing peace and calm to that area, to getting them involved in the process of government, to get to understand what they, what their concerns were and getting them to unite into boards and deal with issues. So I've been doing that kind of work from the beginning. So it's carried over into my management style.
Thank you.
Ellis, would you please share your experience with strategic planning? And how do you align operations with your city's long-term goals?
The city's long-term goals in our five, that was what saved the two cities, a five-year master plan. Put that together in three months in one. And what it did, not only is it getting a document together, but it's getting your team together because everybody had to participate in it. And, and that's what I've been doing with strategic planning. City manager, city administrator can't just run a government. It takes a team, like it takes a village to raise a child.
Would you please describe a time when you had to make a decision that was politically unpopular but necessary?
Ooh. Politically unpopular. I'm not a politician, so I can be excused for making bad decisions politically. The truth is what I, what I tell my commission. And I don't play around with what I have to tell you. I might have to make it a little softer, but the truth usually works for me.
Describe a situation where you needed to educate the public. What was the situation, your actions, and the result?
That is in every position that I've held in city management, educating the public. Let me, let me say this. Educating your public and educating your business community are most important, not only to the businesses and the people that are here, but to the future for people who are coming in. In other words, you can't attract if you've got a negative stigma in your community. So make sure that everybody knows what's going on.
Have you ever had a lead, had to lead an organizational culture change? What challenges did you face when you did that?
Yes. In the communities where I worked, in Washington DC, in most, most communities have had to work on the cultural, cultural change. As I said, when, in cities where people don't, have not had, been working with respect, have not been involved in what's going on. And when I come in with the Mitchell Plan, they've got to get involved. So that's, that's my big, big example. Just always, everything, even here. You might have, you might, you guys might be running 100%. I want you to run 110%. Make the best better. So I come in with my plan and make sure that I involve all the players in the plan. And then we work the plan. And we adjust the plan as we need.
Thank you. Tell us about a time when you had to manage a project that involved multiple departments or agencies. How did you coordinate efforts and ensure accountability across different teams?
The whole management of cities, it is just what you just said. Making, making it where people work together. And what I've done is I'll make sure that everybody understands the goals that you set out, that we have a responsibility to execute those goals. Making sure that people understand their roles and holding them accountable.
Thank you.
Can you describe a time when you had to navigate community resistance to a proposed project or policy?
Yes, there again. The water project was one. Everything that we do in, in the city management, we have to, to make, to keep it from getting to a point where there's so much resistance. What I do is make sure that we are, we explain it. Make sure that we get people involved in the beginning. And I notice you have a bunch of people, citizens, that are on your, on your boards. And that's beautiful. When you have these major decisions to be made, should be making it with the community's involvement. When you're making decisions in a certain area in the city, should be done with the community's involvement in that process. And I'm, as I said, I'm a big proponent of involving the community. I come, that's my background, where it started.
The next one's a three-parter. So I'll read it and then feel free to ask again if you need a reminder. Describe a time when you had to make budget cuts. What was the process you used to determine what items were reduced? How did you build capacity with your department, the public, and the community in the process?
Budget cuts is something I don't like to even think about. But it's a reality of what we have to do. Let me tell you the one time that we had to make budget cuts. The worst time in my city management career was when I had to lay off a number of people just before Christmas. And it turned out there were police and fire involved in that discussion. So you know police and fire unions. Well, we sat down. I made sure that they saw what was in, in the budget, understood what was in the budget. They understood the consequences of not taking an action. Again, communication, communication, communication. And when they, the fact that they believed that I was telling the truth and not just playing with them, they went along with it. That was one of the toughest for me. But it worked out. Did I answer all of the parts?
Was describe a time when you had to make budget cuts? What was the process you used to determine what items were reduced? And how did you build capacity with your department, the public, and the community in the process?
Okay. Now, determining who had, who had to be cut was a monetary decision. Working with my finance department, we worked, we had to work out where we stood financially. We, we knew because we were, we were in a bad way there for a while. The community wasn't too much involved in that, in that decision. Nobody, nobody, they were trying to figure out how we could, how we could do it or what we could do to keep the government alive.
Ellis, how do you engage with a diverse, with diverse stock? Sorry, I'll start over. How do you engage with diverse shareholder groups, including residents, businesses, and elected officials?
How do I?
How do you engage with diverse shareholders or stakeholders?
With this, communicating. Yes, yes. And I know I use that communicating a lot because that's what has brought me success.
What do you consider to be your biggest professional accomplishment? And how would you apply the skills and knowledge gained to address a specific challenge faced by the city of Adrian?
Okay, number one, let me answer that. My, my biggest accomplishment? My biggest accomplishment is being alive. I'm a Vietnam fed. So that was, staying alive was my big, that was my biggest accomplishment. Now, I've been in this business for a number of years. That is my next biggest accomplishment. What was the other part?
How would you, how would you apply the skills and knowledge gained to address a specific challenge faced by the city of Adrian?
My whole background will be brought to, brought to bear to do that. That my training, my experience, my team, all of that will come together to address Adrian's needs.
Thank you.
That means you too.
What are trends that will have an impact on local governments in 2025 and into 2026? What are trends that will have an impact on local governments?
The biggest trend thing right now is, is with the immigration. And I know you guys have heard, I've heard about the one person. And that's, that's an item that has to be addressed strategically. In other words, remember, we have to get funds from the state, from the federal government. We have to have relationship with the state and federal government. And at the same time, we have to care about our residents. And somehow, there needs to be probably a, and I might be going too far with this, but there might, we might need to have a position that people take in their communities. Now, that, that can't be something that somebody does willy-nilly. That has to be done in cooperation with our state representatives and with even our, our federal representatives, our federal, our major organizations like ICMA that rules what I do. ICMA, International City Management Association. So there needs to be, they need to come together and, and take some position to help cities that are facing that, that immigration problem. The other thing is crime. Crime is something we're all going to be facing in our cities. But we have to make sure that we strategically understand what the crime situation is and plan together what we're going to do to address it. Those are two areas that are going to continue.
Ellis, can you provide an example where you needed to increase effectiveness of a team member? What was the situation? Maybe your actions and maybe the result. Can you tell any of that?
Yes, I've had those situations. If I haven't had that in a number of years, I would be great, wouldn't I? I've had situations where I've had employees that, you, everybody doesn't like everybody. So maybe they just didn't like me. But I've had, if an employee doesn't like me, that's, that's okay. If they do their job. If an employee doesn't do his or her job, they've got a problem with me. Okay? And what I try to do is identify what, as soon as I can, as soon as possible, that that's an issue and address it before it becomes a bigger issue. Try to nip it in the bud.
Good, thank you. How would your staff and peers describe your character?
Oh, man. How would they describe my character? Well, I put it this way. I don't even call my references to tell them that I'm applying for a job. I want them to tell the truth. So I must have faith that they're going to tell the truth. But I say this. I treat people like, like they, they want to be treated. And I expect that I'll get good, good responses from them.
How do you bring people together to work on a difficult issue?
That's a good question. And, and when I say it's a good question, I've got a good answer. First of all, I like to find people who are concerned about the issue. In other words, if you've got residents that are concerned about this, if you've got staff that's concerned about, I like to give them a chance to work. Is this a concern that you'd like to be involved in? Give them a chance to address it. And, and through communication, I've found that that works. Now, sometimes things don't always work. Go straight down the road. You have to sidetrack every now and then. But it usually works for me.
How do you properly plan and manage resources?
Yep, resources have already been planned, have already been planned. Your budget has been passed for this year. So now it's the responsibility of us managers to make sure that we're working according to a plan to manage those resources properly, to report the information for those and communicate those results back to you and act. It's not a do-one-thing process. It's a continual process, the budget, the budget funding.
Thank you very much. We are going to take five minutes before we do public comment. So if anybody needs to use the rest, how many do you? 15, sorry. We need a 15-minute recess really quick here. Legal needs to take that as well. And so we will take 15 minutes and then we will do public comment. Okay? Thanks.
Thanks, Ellis. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.